Good evening. I'd like to call this special meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. The date is August 18, 2021. It is 7:07 PM. This is Thomas. Will you please call a roll?
Mrs. Langbell?
Here.
Mrs. Berry? Mrs. Pardee? Mrs. White?
Here.
Mr. Erdl?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Pardee and Mrs. Berry?
A motion.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Langbell, second by Mr. Erdl. Mrs. Thomas, will you call a roll?
Mrs. Langbell?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee? Mrs. White?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Okay, they are excused. Motion carries. Well, all those who are able, please rise for the pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, in this law, liberty and justice for all. Before we begin, our hearts do sincere condolences to Dina and Bordeki Silverberg and Churchill Wohlhart and to the rest of their family for the loss of their son Shmuel Silverberg, who was killed today outside of the Yeshiva in Denver, Colorado. Let us have a moment to say. May his memory be worth a blessing. Thank you. Return now to the agenda. First item is Item A, Report on the 2020 City Audit. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor. No, those are on.
Good evening, everyone. If I can get this one logging up. I'd like to give everybody just a little summary on the results of our calendar year 2020 audit, which was completed by James Chees, the supervisor of CPA. That was completed and filed with the State Auditor's Office, and that audit was subsequently approved by the Auditor's Office and released to the general public on July 8, 2021. There were no citations or findings in the audit report. Several management letter comments and recommendations were included in the report. The city is either implemented or is in the process of completing any suggested proofs. The audit opinion was what we had hoped for, no material issues, and confirmation that the statements were prepared to properly and fairly reflect the financial position of the city. Here's a piece of the actual language from the report. This is from the auditors. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above would not present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of University Heights as of December 31, 2020, and the respective changes in financial position and budgetary comparison to the general fund for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. In 2020, the city was also required to file a schedule detail on all federal money spent during the year. That's an SEFA, Schedule of Federal Funds. The requirement applies to entities receiving more than $750,000 in federal support during a calendar year. This additional filing requirement was necessary to properly account for expenditures related to federal funding received through the CARES Act and spent in 2020 for expenses related to COVID-19 and any associated pandemic expenses. I won't read you the paragraph, the entire paragraph about that schedule, but the last sentence in that says, "In our opinion, the schedule of expenditures of federal rewards is fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the basic financial statements as a whole." Closing, the Finance Department has worked with all levels of the city administration to make continuous improvements to internal controls and operating procedures to fairly present financial information to the residents and business owners of University Heights. Clean opinions for the years 2019 and 2020 with no material instances of noncompliance and no citation is evidence of the commitment of the city to transparency and fiscal purpose. Any questions? Any questions about the audit is posted on the finance page of the city's website, so it's there in its entirety if anybody could care to look at it or have any questions. Please keep.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions at this time for Mr. Kennedy? Very good. Thank you. As he said, the 2020 audit is now posted to the city's website and live 2019. It is another clean audit. So we would all be thankful. Thank you to the Finance Department, Mr. Kennedy, especially for your strong work in keeping our financial balance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before we move on to the next item, I've been made aware that Mr. DeCicco is running late. I think he was flying. He's in daylight at the moment, and his plane was delayed. He will be joining us by Zoom for Items B and C. We're looking at an estimated time of about 7:40 for him to join us, so I suggest that we take the agenda out of order and make a motion to do that. So, Mr. McConville, would it be better to simply just start taking items out of order and go back to B and C, which we pay what we can see and bring them back to the table?
I would ask for a motion to take items out of order, meaning the item D, until Mr. DeCicco is available.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion stated by the law director? Some. Okay, I'll take the motion by Mrs. White. Mr. Rock, that is a second.
Second.
Very good. Mrs. Thomas, will you call a roll?
Mrs. Langbell?
Aye.
Mrs. White?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Motion carries will take items out of order until Mr. DeCicco is available, and we'll start with the next item available, which is Item D, which is a motion authorizing the seeking of bids for the modified Priority One signage. In the packets, several things. The new modified Priority One signage program, which is prepared by Guide Studio, who worked on our, worked on our city's rebranding and presented to us back in 2019, the Priority One sign program. At that time, the bid was not accepted to see. The Priority One program is slightly modified from the previous time of an out-of-bid, so the full signs are included. There are fewer of the main gateway signs and more of the secondary signs. So there is some cost savings that is anticipated based upon the changes therein. This is a motion merely seeking the authorization to go out to bid. Obviously, we would still add bids to review at a later date, at which time we can also consider whether any of those bids are acceptable, but also how we will be paying for those items. One possibility is with the ARPA money that we are receiving, that funds could potentially come from there, but that is something that is a bridge that we can cross at times that we are reviewing the bids and hopefully accepting. Is there a motion to authorize the seeking of bids for the modified Priority One signage program? Some. Motion by Mr. Erdl. Is there a second? There is. Is there any? Call again. Is there a second for the motion authorizing the seeking of bids for the Priority One signage program? While I wait for the second, I'd also point out in the packet are several pictures of the current dilapidated signs, including one on Sillsby Road, one on Eaton, an email from a resident complaining of the overall condition of the signs. There's also pictures of the one on Meadowbrook, also dilapidated, top of the missing, just like the one on Eaton, also has the top missing. Not pictured in the, in the packet are the missing signs on Washington Boulevard at the Cleveland Heights entrance of the city. That sign was destroyed in a car accident a few weeks ago. Also missing is the sign that is at the southern end of Belvoir, which has been missing for several years and has not been replaced at all. All that is there now is the, is the masonry under which the sign used to be mounted. There is a lot of sentiment. The email that's been included is meant to be representative and not in any way the totality of opinion that we have received at City Hall, complaints we've received online, phone calls we've received complaining overall about the general dilapidated nature of the signs and the question as to why the city has allowed these signs to persist this way and not replace them. So I would ask one more time, is there a second for the motion to go out to bid? Mrs. White?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, before Mayor Wood took office, Councilman Rock and I worked tirelessly on trying to get the branding and the gateway signs up and running. You know, when you, when you did take office, we, we did that, you know, full steam ahead, and we are completely, Council's completely committed to these signs. Just as little history, in 2019, the finance director at that time told us we had almost a $4 million deficit, so we were really uncomfortable authorizing $100,000 for signs when COVID hit, when COVID is dead. But I can tell you that in the 2022 budget, that Council is completely on board to make sure that we put this in the budget and make sure that it goes through. I just, one question I had is how long do bids take typically?
It could take several weeks to, to go out to bid here.
Okay. As long as it's not months and months, so I'm, that's great. So it will, it will be in the 2022 budget, and we can go, we can go forward then.
My concern with the addition of the question of why someone tried to recall, in fact, when we had gone out to bid prior to including it into the budget, there was a question about whether or not those bids would remain open and good into the budgeting cycle, and that we then need to go back to those individuals and see if they're pulled over. So I just think it's a matter of course, or order of things, I should say, to be real honest.
All right, so we do have a motion, but no second. I'll call for a second one more time before moving on. Is there a second to the motion bid by Mr. Erdl to authorize seeking bids for the modified Priority One signage? Hearing none, the motion fails for one to second. We then move forward to Item E, Ordinance 2021-16, Adopting the City of University Heights Employee Policies and Procedures Manual to declare an emergency. This is on fourth reading. Mr. McConville, if you would take this, or Mr. Kennedy?
I can take this.
Okay.
Council, you have before you at previous meetings, updated and completed University Heights Employee Policies and Procedures Manual. I believe the administration has asked for some additional time connection with former employees whose communication might be impacted by the new policies, so that we can speak to those employees and inform them of what those costs will be going forward. The need for an updated and comprehensive employee manual is significant and has been longstanding, and this will mark a significant improvement for the city and should create ease of administration, connection with employment-related matters. For additional comment, I would defer to the finance director to answer.
Just to let everyone know that we did have meetings or content that everybody knows affected by the changes in the manuals. What is currently in place, the manual is pretty extensive in a variety of different areas of human resources and personnel management, and as Mr. McConville said, it's been long overdue, and I would say that probably in the future we would have to amend it once or twice a year, just based on the volatility of things and different issues that come up. But I think this would be a great first step into solidifying the manual that hopefully then, in the future, we can extend it to union agreements to make all the bright water items consistent for all authorities and make the union cap tricks specific to what those particular needs are in that area. But it's a good first step, very comprehensive. I do thank the finance director for working on this in manner and within our outside of the council.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Is there a motion to, to approve Ordinance 2021-16, Adopting the City of University Heights Employee Policies and Procedures Manual, authorizing?
I'm with Mayor.
There is a motion by Mrs. Langbell to adopt the ordinance on emergency. Is there a second?
Second. Second by Mr. McGee.
Any discussion on the motion?
Can I add something?
Yes.
Just to the law director and to the finance director, you know, we, only we see it as cat related last night, so I know that I didn't have a chance to thoroughly review it, but based on the notes that we talked about in our previous discussion, those were all included, there was nothing extra, there was nothing taken out.
That's right. Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing that, Mrs. Thomas, we will take two roll calls. First is on suspension of the motions.
We don't need to suspend.
But you're right, we don't need to suspend all those. Okay. But we do need five to pass on emergencies. Mrs. Thomas, we please call a roll on the motion.
Mrs. Langbell?
Aye.
Mrs. White?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Item G, A Motion to Approve the Purchase of Sound System Microphones from Norson Inc. for the Wiley Meeting Space in an amount not to exceed $14,392.84. Mrs. Thomas, you were going to present.
Yes, Council.
Mr. Gould, could you bring the microphone to where Mrs. Thomas?
Mayor? I think there was a.
Did I skip something? Oh, yes. You're right. Oh, you know what? You're right. Before we do that, let's address Item F. But before, but before I read Item F, I'm going to suggest that we entertain a motion to move Item F to the end of the agenda, and as there are items pertaining relating to Item F, that we may want to address on executive session. Very good motion by Mr. Gould to move Item F to the end of the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second him.
Second by Mrs. Langbell. Mrs. Thomas, we call a roll.
Mrs. Langbell?
Aye.
Mrs. White?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Item F is now moved to the end of the agenda, and we proceed then to Item G, which already again is a motion to approve purchase, the sound system and microphones from Norson Inc. for the Wiley Meeting Space in an amount not to exceed $14,392.84. Mrs. Thomas, you have the floor.
Yes, Norson is a sound company that did the sound system in Council Chambers that we've had for many years, so we do have a good history with them as far as their product, their support, and their leadway kind if we have any technical issues. The gentleman did come out to Wiley and he walked around and see what we would need. And the first quote he gave me was on the very low end, and when I told him, it was just a basic, like people buy microphones, put them up, and before. But we want to also be able to bring to YouTube and Facebook, so that means we're at a professional level. And he quoted the price. The idea is that we will have a rack, and we'll have a rack with the sound system, and we would have a microphone and one wireless microphone to use. The system will be portable, so if we are home on it here, we can take the system wherever we need to take it. It's also expandable, so if we have more needs, more, more features, we can add that too. So I think that this is the best option for us right now. I'm confident in what he quoted, and he will give us all his court to make sure of it.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. If you would come, please, there's an add-on item for $1,378.23 for an ADA compliant system, listening system. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be in case we have someone who was hearing it here or whatever, that we never had that feature before, so that would be a good thing to add, so that we be fully ADA compliant.
Very good.
That would be as well as the other things that we fired to you for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Any questions for Mrs. Thomas? Mrs. White?
Thank you. So what we have here now, the microphones, the speakers here, like, isn't none of this ours right now?
No, it's one day round. It's, Hueys is here providing the sound here for today's meeting. So this, this is for the microphones that we would have here then on a regular convoling basis.
Thank you.
Gould?
Of the items, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gould.
Of the items that are part of the core components on page 76 of the packet, are there any of those that are existing at Council Chambers? I'm just wondering, is that a subsystem or a?
They have to hold the system apart. That would be a good thing to not.
To piggyback on that, if there's no longer going to hold meetings in Council Chambers, would we just manually hold the sound system? You said this is for, almost where that appeals to me, because I don't know how long it would be at this point.
That sound system, the amps and everything, are built into that metal book that's along the wall, so by the time we'll be doing all that, and we don't know the condition that it will be at, because I've seen it sleep off on the roof, it'll be down. And the microphones are built in.
Okay. Now you're saying the cost of retrofit using our existing equipment?
Yes.
It's going to be costly as well.
Yes, exactly.
Mrs. Thomas, for your business. Did you get other bids for this, or did anybody else come out and assess our needs?
I began to advise for this.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rock, or was it Mr. Gould or Mr. Rock? Mr. Gould, thank you.
You might have a little. I'm usually below square around.
Yeah, and the mask, I couldn't, I couldn't see whose face.
So it seems like the streaming capabilities of this may allow us to better meet CDC guidelines regarding capacity for our meetings while still allowing public access live to our meetings as they're occurring. And it also seems like the amplification of the sound may allow for individuals to be further spaced out into their room while still maintaining their social distance, and those of these may need some of the requirements for our COVID funds. Is there a potential that the need to have this equipment in this space with the ability to stream and access costs also may give counterbalance that those who are in different parts of the room may be able to hear us, may qualify those videos, question for law director or finance director, but may qualify the huge chunk of the COVID money we've received for this purpose?
I would defer to the law director and the finance director with regard to that degree of decision. I would add also, though, that there are some add-on things from another vendor with regard to streaming video that we are looking to also acquire that are much below this cost, but are in addition to these costs, which will allow us, once it's in place, and we are hopeful to have it for the first regular meeting of September, so that if people want to watch these proceedings streaming live, they will be able to do that. I know there's been a call, I know Mrs. White, who shared that also on behalf of some residents, that there is a convenience factor and a safety factor and a comfort factor, and it's something that even before the pandemic that we were working towards, having our meetings streamed live as they were happening, as opposed to what we're doing here today, where we are video recording meetings, but it won't be on YouTube until probably sometime tomorrow. And this way, sure answer is that is part of works, it's not part of this particular quote, but it's contemplated that this will, it is understood that this will work with the other equipment we're looking at. With regard to if it's a COVID line item, I would defer either Mr. Kennedy or Mr. McConville with respect to how we may properly best go about it.
My opinion is that that is an original expenditure that fits into the regulations of the property, and I haven't seen any new regulations that would change my mind about that. So yes, I believe the COVID funds could be used to cover this expenditure.
I agree with you. Is there anything we need to do in terms of the motion to make sure that that's the way that we do this, would we say that the money's coming from that, or is that some of it's left to the, you know, the capulation and then?
Probably never, to put that in the record. Would you be tempted to appropriate those ARPA funds?
And to further clarify that, you are prepared to hear my response in our.
Okay, very good. Thank you both. Mrs. White, she has something.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One, or maybe it's for Kelly, one do you expect to get next streaming quote for, because this is already $14,000 and really is a package. Streaming is kind of all part of the Council Chambers system, and I think it should be, it should be approved together.
Kelly, do you have the, Mrs. Thomas, do you have, we don't have it included in the packet. I know that we, that we had a quote for this pricing from another vendor. It was the same vendor that I know that you use at your church. I know that you, me, and Mr. Cook looked at that, and it looked like it would be suitable for our needs. It's certainly below a different level of, you know, our spending, you know, the administration's spending authority, but do you happen to recall what that amount was?
No, that is a camera.
Right. There was like a three-camera package with, with controls.
I could see that pull up.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, yes, Mrs. White.
You had also mentioned that there is possibly the additional cost for something for ADA?
Yes.
I'd just like to know what the total bottom line figure is going to be before we vote on.
Yeah, that would be $15,771.37.
And then this additional put on for the live streaming.
Right, which is a different vendor, but also.
I mean, is it like a couple thousand dollars or?
I have a leaky, I can remember, because I know about the.
Yeah, I think it was, it might have been less than that. I want to say it was closer to 900, but I don't.
Mr. Cook here?
He is not here, so.
One of the things, Mayor, in that capacity that I've enjoyed about other public meetings is when the camera is able to hear this, and there's an hour limit. So when I'm speaking, even if it's sitting there, it's able to focus over here, the sound of my voice when you're speaking goes back to you, and I just think if, again, assistance to individuals who are not present, I'm like, who is speaking, is, as we're wearing masks? And so I just want to ensure that, if it's being referred to as a package, I think we did, I don't know, really just another question, how much was the system for the evening?
I think it was kind of about two grand for the system for the evening, to rent these microphones, the labor for the setup and so on. So this is not something we want to do for every meeting.
So, Vice Mayor, I think what I'd like to do is, it feels like a package, Mayor, and so what I just want to make sure is that when the video does come in, and can you, would you be willing to bring that back? There's an argument that this, the video is within your spending authority independently of it, but my view is this is part of a $50,000 package, and therefore should be kind of part of that. But I don't want to delay, like, I would like to have some input and understanding of the system that we're receiving. No, but just because it's used at the church doesn't mean that it's something that necessarily we want to, would be the best solution for our purposes, and so I'm just hoping that if we pass this in house, you can just agree with the other portion, the video portion. can you just agree with the other portion, the video portion will come back to us at some point when it's ready for review?
Well, we want to have the video here ready for the next meeting. So we have this portion up today because we live with the ADA add-on, meaning access to $15,000. Right, right. And the, we didn't bring or include the packet information from the other vendor for the video camera add-on.
I did want to email Mr. Cook to read on final. But I don't know if this is, if I see, was saying that he both start, we tap, we got something.
That sounds right, the three tap.
And that price was $999.
Oh, that's right, okay.
And I think that might fall in.
Yeah, I mean, if Council would simply.
Can you say what that is for?
Sure.
Okay, that's just three mini cameras. So there will be a camera, and maybe add-on to the, there will be a camera facing that. It's, there will be a camera for the audio, the volume.
Right.
And there will be another camera that gets moved in on a specific person.
Then who's controlling those cameras?
That would be Mr. Cook.
Yeah, I believe it would be operated from a tablet.
I mean, I think we can say something like, tonight's $17,000. However, Mayor, it's your intention to actually purchase all of those people for the next meeting?
Well, yes, I mean, we don't want to, I think it'd be ideal that we have everything in place by the first regular meeting fall, and I don't think we want to have another special meeting, or do we want to keep renting equipment? So ideally, you know, what we could do is, is we could say, between this vendor and the other one, and then put in, you know, the additional $2,000, like you're saying. And we should come in well within.
Just another question for Mrs. Thomas. Have you kind of researched what other cities are doing with live streaming?
Yeah, I put a live stream, I just told this is what I use in our church. And I just gave the whole back end of the project, you know, because I want to do the order on. So I, you know, I just handed that part of the off time to the audio department. So I don't know, you know, what else you could do. But my head can go over to others' stuff, so I can.
Sure, I just want to be sure, and we have the due diligence that we're getting about.
And that was the one system that I knew of.
Right. You know, one of the advantages there is that Tyler, Mrs. Thomas's son, is familiar with that church, so we were able to talk with him and know that it could be suitable, pricing right. And there was another system that we looked at previously that never really worked the way we hoped it would. And we had the driver, and we go along the course of Mrs. Thomas's church. We didn't want to overthink this, and we were interested in getting this, you know, taken care of sooner rather than later, and going with the technology where we had some folks that were maybe ancillary to our proceedings, but already had the area that had good, helped us out, and should regard to some of the subtext of it, so.
And if the audio stream comes from the contemplated RAP system, how does that interact with the video stream and combine for a single stream? Should we have the same request?
Yes, the vendor, Mr. Norris, he said, I did show them what we were looking at as far as the video. And he said they would hear easily that, and he would make sure, and he was willing to make sure. This is a lie to make, but he said it is a power for the two, as many times as possible. It would be terrible.
I did provide a little bit of detail on some other municipalities that do.
Sure.
I know of one municipality that is quite literally doing nothing and saying to its residents, if you want to see what's going on, come to the meeting. I know of another municipality that during the pandemic installed a pretty expensive, state-of-the-art microphone, video, audio system that broadcasts its meetings live. They have TVs up on the walls and the cameras on voice activated. So if you begin to speak, you appear on the TV, on the broadcast, automatically. So let's say we're kind of in the middle of those two experiences.
Thank you, Mr. Gould. This is what?
You know, listen, I think we need to purchase this, however, this is a perfect example of what should go to our tech committee with the experts there. And I'm just, I want to make sure we're doing the best, you know, we're getting the best price, we're getting the equipment that we need. I don't know enough about this. It seems to me that, you know, it's definitely something that we need. I don't know how fast the tech committee can get together and review this, though, that's the only problem.
Well, I don't believe the tech committee to review the bulk of this, which is the audio portion. And we have an established vendor that has worked with the city before, who is familiar with our needs generally, who installed the current system that is at City Hall. And, you know, the video add-on is about $1,000 or more. I don't know that Mayor's meeting techn advisor committee gathered. I don't know about their schedules, other than a meeting we're intending to have on Monday with Ray and Associates. And right now, we don't need to have a chair in that committee because he resigned. So my feeling here is that we should go ahead, especially since we have a first meeting coming, the first full week of September, and we simply proceed with this audio package and video package that Mrs. Thomas also brought. I could certainly see doing more due diligence for a setting where we're building the City Hall, and we're building a meeting room that will be here for decades to come. We don't believe we'll be here for decades in this particular room. But we do need something that will conscientiously get our meetings out to the public. We do know that there's a call by members of the public that they would like to watch our meetings online as they are streamed, or as they could be streamed online as they're happening. We want to be responsive to that. I know that this is why she heard from residents who are interested in that. I know I have too, I'm sure others have as well. I know that there are some folks that are here today who were interested in watching it on stream. There was a stream, now they're here instead. So we'd like to compensate the public in that way. And I feel like the Westmore City is relatively much possible to do that.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Mayor, I just, I don't disagree either. Certainly, we want to make everything accessible and transparent and easy to view and participate in. I just have concerns that we're really still a little firm information that passed in the vendor. We've done this before with various IT vendors. I'm not the people that, we didn't even, you know, check with other cities or make a few calls to get some different pricing. Although I do feel strongly that, you know, everybody deserves to be able to be heard in these meetings and to be able to see what we're doing. It's just a little uncomfortable.
I, um. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gould.
I share the concerns about what the city, I wish it ever had a budget, we've grown on this. I know we've contemplated this in the past month, but I just can't see spending another $2,000 or $4,000 of the total project cost. You know, if we delay this to go through that process, and then, you know, we, next meeting comes along, we have to rent the equipment for another $2,000, and we could have just put that $4,000 as the cost of a system that we own. So, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the sound system and microphones from Norelson Inc. for the wide meeting space in an amount not to exceed $1,000, in an amount not to exceed $17,000. Excuse me, strike that. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the sound system and microphones from Norelson Incorporated, plus a video streaming system for the wide meeting space in an amount not to exceed $17,000, and to appropriate from our COVID funds that amount of money for the following reasons. Councilists meet in this space, which is mobile and which is temporary, and we may, for various reasons related to the pandemic, need to move from space to space. We have to maintain social distancing in order to allow individuals in different parts of the room, where the amplification of sound may be better. University Heights has an ADA population, not many of whom may be at high risk for exposure to COVID even after they're vaccinated, and may be in a safer location while they are home. And even non-vulnerable populations may be feel safer and more comfortable while viewing this meeting during the pandemic and keeping access to their COVID needs during the pandemic from a virtual location, which the stream will allow them to do. For those, you know, the reasons that I've seen on the record previously, I believe that that's an appropriate appropriation.
Thank you. Very good, thank you. We have a motion. I would add that the video is not from the same vendor, it's not Norelson. So Norelson would be the audio portion, but the video is from another vendor. Kelly, do you happen to have any of that vendor?
I'm allowing you the flexibility because I said from Norelson and the video system.
Okay, by the way, to be clear for the record, we're not talking about buying everything from this one vendor, but there is another vendor that we're looking at, the video. Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Gould, is there a second?
Sound check.
Okay, I'll take the second for Mr. Gould. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thomas, we call.
Mrs. Lanko?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good motion carries. I see that Mr. DeCicco is, is on the Zoom. I can't see the other screen. Can you folks see the Shreve Valley?
Yes, yeah.
On the screen? Okay, excellent, excellent. All right, so. Mr. DeCicco, are you there?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, I think we're getting a little feedback here, so. Nick, can you speak one more time, just for company audio?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
You're not going to be able to get rid of that delay. You will not be able to get rid of that delay unless we feed this board into his computer.
Okay.
So the best way to proceed is have him do his presentation. I'll mute this. When he's done, we'll bring it back up.
Okay, very good. You may proceed, can you unmute?
And all computers have to have their audio.
Pull it up in the neck.
All right, very good. Well, first, I want you to announce the agenda before we proceed. But thank you. Okay, so we're going to proceed then with item B, which is the presentation by Cog Valley Dispatch Services, the 2020 year-end report and discussion regarding the merger of Dispatch Center for 911 and emergency dispatch services. We have the executive director of CEDN, HHC, C N D Cico coming to us remotely by Zoom. So I'm going to unmute briefly just to tell him that you may proceed, and then I'll re-mute so that we don't get feedback, okay?
Go.
All right. Nick, you may proceed.
Mr. Gould, you may proceed, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good evening, everybody, thanks for accommodating me. Just now here, I just bear with me here. I'm going to go over the power plate. And basically, for those of you that don't know, they weren't around when we started this. About five years ago, we entered into an agreement from the ICU, Sugar Valley, for the Hightown Press Card. And we were contractually, we built the facility, but then to run the day-to-day operations, it was a five-year term, and right now, at the end of November of this year, of that five-year term, it'll go. And it was always the intent that after that five-year term, if everybody was satisfied with services, that they would go ahead and join Sugar Valley. We've tied in, we spent millions of dollars on the infrastructure at Sugar Valley, so how are we able to save Hightown Press a lot of money whilst we can just tie in our existing infrastructure? And we've treated you as a sister agency, so we didn't have to read about this wheel. So that time has come, Mayor, real, I believe, is really a mayor that's still around. That was part of the original discussion, depending what that, you know, what that life looks like to be able to follow. So we didn't work comprised of five agencies, it started off only four. And as we were doing, you know, on Christian Heights, a lot of joy, they became part of the original plan. From there, we haven't added any more agencies, but we've always had two or three agencies that kept on coming back. Just, they get asked to join. Shreve Valley has right now two facilities. Our first facility is located in the basement of the Bedford Hospital. It's comprised of 17 municipalities, all the way from some of the smallest villages and townships to some of the bigger cities, such as the City of Houston. From there, we, if you everybody knows, we built Hightown Press. And then from there, we went out and we built the Brexhill Facility. The Brexhill Facility is located in the brain, Brexhill Place apartment. It started off with only four agencies. As we were rebuilding it, we added four more. And then when we opened, over the course of time, we've added four additional ones. Our latest one was the County Sheriff's Office. They joined in the beginning of this year, and in December of last year, we joined the Metro Parks. So we are looking at some exciting stuff. All in all, we have Hightown Press where to make that jump and join Sugar Valley. We have 33 municipalities that are our belt. We are the same technical government, council of governments, where everybody has one vote. You as the city are landlord of it. And whether you're a very large city or a very small township, everybody gets one vote. We don't wait for any votes. So each municipality, whether you're, again, like Metro Parks, County Sheriff's Office, or Shreve Falls Township, that contracts all their services out. The village of Shreve Falls, everybody gets one vote. I've included a nice little map, a color-coded map, that just shows you different facilities and what member agency belongs to. Currently, with the three facilities, we're roughly 65, 67% of all the municipalities in County County. With the memberships, it has its privileges, but just because of our bite more. We were able to save, you know, the fire department, tens of thousands of dollars on the ACH grants. We were doing the same thing, we sell people between the heights. And it's not because we're special, it's just that we buy a lot more of it, and we get much better rates than anybody else. There's a hard graph on one of the next PowerPoint, that just shows each of the three facilities. And as of last year, we were just shy of a half million debt collateral service. That does not include the Metro Parks, and it does not include the Sheriff's Department. So I anticipate that number going up to roughly 750,000, half-holts position. So between the three centers, we're very, very busy. The next page, just bear with me, because I'm trying to read this from my, myself. Our form of coverage is, obviously, I'm the director, for each facility, we have a users group, and that's what I call the beats on the ground. On the police department levels, the sergeants are below, on the fire department levels, the captains are below. We meet quarterly, and they discuss, you know, what's working, what's not working, what we have to tweak. They'll vet out any recommendations. Coming back committees goes to the chiefs committee, and then, again, they also need a bare minimum for going away, and then they will look at the proposals and they basically say yes or no. From there, it comes to my table, and then we do a consultation and make all the changes that need to be made. It's impossible for us to have just one users group and one chiefs group for all 33 municipalities, so we break it up by facility. So we break it up by facility. So there will be no operational changes. If Heights Hill Press joining Sugar Valley, everything's going to remain the same. The only differences would be is that the employees will have a different logo on their chest, and they will receive a paycheck from Sugar Valley instead of Heights Hill Press. The biggest cost savings for us is, we're going to say, roughly a hundred forty to a hundred fifty thousand dollars just on the healthcare charges because of the size that we are. The mayors, city managers, CEOs for the Metro Parks and the sheriffs, the sheriff's department, they comprise what I call the executive committee, so all thirty-three are represented. You have the final saying, pretty much everything that happens, here, the fiduciaries will approve the budgets. The mayor's group is responsible for admitting new members. So if you get a new member that nobody wants to have, or there's some conditions, it goes to that group. I do not admit new members. Always has to go back to that mayor. We schedule four meetings every year, but we are maybe going to have to be human forceful or just fill mirrors back of the fiduciary plan. And you guys can see, like, a flow chart just showing you how to line up, how this works and how it works. We have a smaller group, I call it the second committee. It is voted on by membership, so we have a board, a president, vice president, secretary of chief. And then what we added is we added a main board, our city manager representative, each of us. So that group will have a representative, the rest will have a representative in the Heights facility who have to represent, and it gives you the best points that you can. I've already learned about some of the policies that we're trying to get to the majority of these cost savings. But at the end of the day, what I am concerned about is getting anything forward. We can try to entry our own wire, which I've been trying to launch. And we can train mining to one hundred and twenty seconds off that. So for those of you that are aware, each time somebody does a nine-one-one call, it's probably a way down with the county antitrust system. And they'll ask you what city of your emergency is, and then they transfer over to us, the Bedford area, to where that connect to go. They do their job and they do it well, so it's not a swing on them. It's just that we can cut one hundred and twenty-two seconds off the call and get those people much quicker. And at the end of the day, that's what it's all about. Currently, on every cell phone, there's twenty-five cents that goes to the county. And that generates roughly two point nine million dollars a year. And that's the pop. We're looking to get some of that money, we're starting a money funding. And right now, given our size, we will be eligible for funding. And then obviously, if you get nine-one-one called directly, you have to cut that and help better serve the residents, at least. And from there, I know that was quick and easy. I will entertain any questions that anybody has, and I can answer them the best I know.
Thank you, Nick. Ewes, what were you saying about what we need to do in the sound for the feedback or asking questions?
There can only be one open microphone.
Okay.
So, if your computer is open to him, I can take questions probably from this microphone here in the center.
Okay.
It will minimize the feedback. Unless it's plugged into your computer, you're not going to completely get rid of the feedback.
All right.
So we can only have one input, is what it is.
Okay. Before we do that, did we have questions for Nick? I know it was kind of hard to hear some of that.
Mayor, I have a very difficult time hearing what was said. I'd like to interact a little bit more fluidly with.
Sure. Why don't we do this then? You're suggesting going to the podium, right?
I am.
Okay, so we're going to kill all microphones except for the podium mic, and then if you would go up to the podium mic, I'll unmute and you can ask Nick a question.
I prefer to have him come in against me and to do the presentation event with. I'd like, A, to do that so we can hear the presentation better. B, I'd like some time to review the memo from Chief Rogers, and then to formulate questions based on the memos that I have and the presentation that I hear a little bit better. So let me propose to table this until our next regular scheduled meeting.
Well, this is just the presentation portion of the agenda, and then the next item is his first reading, not passage.
Okay.
So, all right. So, I'm going to explain to Nick where we are, so I'm going to go up to that microphone.
You can do it from yours. Try it from yours.
Okay, so, all right.
See how that works.
Okay. Nick, are you there?
Yes, I am.
So, Nick, my next meeting.
This sounds.
Would you be able to come to me personally?
Yes, as long as you give me the date, I can be there personally, I promise. And again, I apologize to everybody I've told this, this data, I couldn't rebook everything.
All right, there is some, there's a desire to.
Thank you, everybody.
So, we're asking you to come back, that it'll be easier to have the discussion.
We went away.
All right, we will. Perhaps the thing meant to do would be to, Mr. Gould, you'd made a motion. How tabling is the appropriate, but to resume the presentation, have him back at the next regular meeting on Thursday, September ninth. Is there a second?
I'll send it.
It's second, aye. Mrs. Blankfeld, Mrs. Thomas, we call her.
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye. Mrs. Wise, aye. Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Yeah, very good. We will have Mr. DeCicco back at the next meeting, having available. Here's he will be available, seems so. Item C is Oregon's 2021-25 authorizing agreement with the Sugar Valley Dispatch Council, CBD, Regional Council of Governments, sent to Ohio law to join CBD's Joint Police Fire Emergency Medical Services Communication System for dispatch and police fire EMS services in and for multiple communities and authorizing the dissolution of the Heights Hill Press Communication Center, HHCC. This is our first reading. So we do have the proposal ordinance in the packet. That's something that I would encourage all council members to take a look at before the next meeting on September ninth. There are some materials from our chiefs, as well as a memo from me that were provided in advance of the package going out. This is my number one. And while I understand that it was difficult to follow with, as you can see, Bill was saying, there are several benefits that come with this particular merger. And one of them is, there are certain costs that we know will be savings and we can in reasonably anticipate to realize with regard to the cost of health insurance for the employees of the three dispatch centers. Right now, we have this loose affiliation among them. But in consolidating, they would qualify for being bid out together for health insurance. And there's anticipated savings that would come with that, that would be shared then by all municipalities involved, including Alums, which alone would be a good reason to do this. But there are some additional benefits as well, as outlined in the memo. The one that I would especially highlight is the fact that by reorganizing in this way under one umbrella, we would be part of one of the four largest PSAPs in the region. And in doing that, though it is not guaranteed, it puts us in line for improved, or improved, as in mobile 911. Right now, when you call 911 from your cell phone in University Heights or in any of the HHCC communities, it does not go to the HHCC Communication Center. It goes to CComms downtown, and they will ask you, you know, where you're calling from, where are you? And they will have to ascertain that before they can transfer you to our regional dispatch center, HHCC. And in an emergency, those vital seconds can make all the difference. So, cutting out one particular, one transfer and being able to have mobile calls go directly to our regional dispatch center could save a life at some point. So, what we have here is a certain opportunity in saving some money and a strong possibility of improving services with mobile 911 in a critical way, which I'm not even going to try to put a price there for. So, this is definitely a way of moving forward, which stands to improve service here in the community, and really throughout the Eastside region, because it puts the cities in our regional dispatch center, University Heights, Cleveland Heights, Shaker Heights, Richmond Heights, and South Upland into a larger PSAP with other Eastside cities, where we all then stand the opportunity to get control of our 911 calls that way, and additional funding from outside sources that would also benefit the operations of the center and would also stand to save us further money and enhance the quality of 911 services here in our community and throughout. This is DeCicco. Mr. Gould, go ahead.
The other CBD, CBD, other major HCC communities, they must also pass the same ordinance for any one of them that is not a part of the joint CBD?
Uh, that's a little tricky. If one sits it out, it could be that they would be on the outside looking in and having to find another way to provide dispatch services. We're hopeful that all five communities will pass this, so that nobody is left out and that everybody shares the same benefit of the evolution of the organization into the smarter.
Would we even allow the HCC and the CBD without the others?
I suppose we could.
I think the contract is expired.
Yes.
This would be the window which we can do. And one other question, are you aware of any other HCC communities have already passed a revolution?
I believe South Upland has passed a revolution. Cleveland Heights has passed a recent committee, but it still needs to take it formally to council. Shaker had the initial presentation. I don't know the status of it with Richmond Heights.
Do you know what Shaker Heights could do that may perhaps be a good addition?
I don't know if they've voted yet. I think they may have had it on first reading. Most of the other communities have only one month summer recess week two, so we're a little bit further behind in having the initial presentation than they are. But there are lots of good reasons to do this, so I do believe that ultimately all five of us will find our way to. If there's nothing further at this juncture, we'll consider the first reading to be had, and we will have to stand on the agenda for the first reading in September, on September ninth. The next item on the agenda is letter H, update on the trash survey timeline. Who would like to speak on this issue?
So.
Mr. Gould.
Thank you, man. So I've been receiving a lot of communication from residents who are interested in knowing when the survey will be sent out, and there's some communication from council requiring that you understand better what your intention was. My understanding is that council can authorize it to send, but the way that our charter system works is that we can't force you to set the money once you pass it. So, you know, in a situation where you bring us, for instance, the audio recording will be authorized. Presumably, we've discussed that, but if you decided not to, there would be nothing for you to force that. So I just wanted to understand better, so that I can better explain the constituents who probably think this is passing a G-boarding survey, what your intention was around.
Okay, well, the last survey meeting Mr. Corney attended, there were questions administration wanted in the survey that apparently are not now in survey, and those are things that administration would like to see in the survey. So, they're not intending to send out the surveys it's currently configured. It's not in our view in final form, and those questions need to be added.
So the questions that weren't added from Mr. Corney, the administration, I think credit communicated by those aren't added, does have to do with questions surrounding whether or not there would be an increase in taxes if we remain in the current system. And part of the work that we did, Dr. Sutton, was to ensure that the manner which the questions were offered, council members, you know, suggested certain questions, Dr. Sutton formulated those, was to ensure that we got clear information from our citizens without suggesting one way or another what they should do. And so, during those discussions, and I understand the diverse reasons why we didn't participate in that final meeting, but I appreciate you sending Mr. Corney. But with those questions that the administration had posed, nobody on council is prepared to raise any of these taxes if we remain in the system, or if we keep the current system that we have. And so to suggest in a survey, "Well, if we raise your taxes, how do you feel about this?" felt to Dr. Sutton and to the members who were present at the committee meeting that it really suggested it would skew the responses we had. So if somebody were to say, you know, if you moved to the, if you moved to automated trash pickup of, you know, a pack of wild dogs has to move into your backyard, people may be less apt to say, "Yeah, I like backyard trash, or I like homemade trash pickup." But no one's suggesting that moving to a new system comes with a pack of wild dogs. In the same way that nobody on council who has the sole authority to raise taxes in that manner is suggesting that we would raise it with these taxes. And for those reasons, in consultation with Dr. Sutton, those questions were not added. As several questions that were posed by various members of council were also not included. So that's why they're not there, and I really do hope that you reconsider your position because we're trying to get the clearest picture that we can on various matters related to our solid waste collection. I really do feel that the product that Dr. Sutton and others put together is a really great product.
Well, I respectfully disagree. We already know from the solid waste study that we have that we have the third most expensive solid waste pickup in the county, and we also have the third worst results outside of state, Cleveland, on our side. And to send out a survey that divorces the question of maintaining a method of pickup that is not sustainable either financially or environmentally, without any discussion about the costs associated, it is not a survey worth spending taxpayer dollars, and administration will not send out that survey. So you may want to take another look at it. You may want to take another look at it, Dr. Sutton.
That's all, that's all I have to do.
So, we'll move on to the next item. Our motion authorizing payment to Dr. Sutton for services rendered in connection with a solid waste survey.
So I can take that too, man. There are two portions that Dr. Sutton examined through contracts for. Back in, what was it, May, there was a discussion about, I don't have a contract for Dr. Sutton, so I haven't, you know, I don't, there were public sections I haven't made. One thing you didn't intend to make at all.
That's not true. Well, I have also told you in May, we would force, the city would force, make sure he's taken care of. You have continued this canard that we're not going to pay Dr. Sutton, or that the administration's not going to pay Dr. Sutton. We're waiting Dr. Sutton's bill. We don't have a bill from Dr. Sutton.
So to go back to what I was saying, when we were in May, you initially sent out an email that said that you were not at that time inclined to pay Dr. Sutton for the services. an email that said that you were not at that time inclined to pay Dr. Sutton for his services.
Mayor, that's a misstatement of my email, but you may proceed.
Mayor, I appreciate it if you're going to respond to what I'm saying. Please feel free to correct what I've said if you feel that it's wrong, but since you have given the floor, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on these issues without other interconnection.
You may proceed, Mr. Gould.
And so, when we had that email, there was a discussion about whether or not there was a contract with Dr. Sutton. So, he sent through two contracts. One of them was for the services that he had rendered up into that one, roughly $500, and the rest was for the remainder of the survey. For, have either of those been signed by the administration?
No, and our duty is work isn't done here. We don't have a completed survey in administration's view.
So, when it comes to what we've already done, which was for the design and the discussions that he's had thus far with all of us who participated in this, is that you're waiting for an invoice from him for those services and that you pay him?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Kennedy, what do we have from Dr. Sutton in my hands, please?
I do not have an invoice. It's been signed off and approved and booked.
So, do you have the summary of what he's already done and working with us and the price of $500 review?
Yes, Mr. Gould, I have those documents that I think you referred to, or set in May.
So, is there something more specific that he needs to provide in order to get payment for that $500?
I mean, after tonight, if you're authorizing payment for it to that, the mayor and it's said that he hasn't finished on work, so.
Okay, so if council approves a $500 for what's already been done, based on the detailed work that he's providing to us, then you're able to pay him at that point?
I think we're okay to pay for the work this time on today. I think based on the completed project of, if you're going to authorize the payment today, then I'd give that to him, sure.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have a bill from Dr. Sutton?
I only have the original documents that they came to us to make.
From Mr. Gould?
I only have the original text.
Right, we have no bill from Dr. Sutton, correct?
I don't receive any since, I'm scrolling off that because at that time, in May, I think the project is imminent and it's going to be planned soon and there's still some discussion about that, but to pay if that's not going to work, but you want to maybe do some of the work done today, an authorization for.
So, then to be clear, the documents that you have that outline what he's done and the price of $500, if we pass that, is sufficient for you to enter?
For me, yes.
And is there additional, I mean, this is the problem that we have is that we authorize that and you're able to do that, the mayor still needs to sign up on that. So, Mayor, is there additional information other than what's been provided that you'd like to see from Dr. Sutton?
Yes, Dr. Sutton and Walden Wallace have not filled out any of the vendor paperwork that all vendors have to fill out in the City of University Heights before they're paid. The deputy finance director sent out the email to that extent and we have nothing from Dr. Sutton or Walden Wallace to that point. So, that would have to be done before any kind of payment would be offered.
When was that sent out?
I forwarded that to you during this discussion as we were setting this agenda.
So, there's a message from the deputy? When would, do you have any?
I don't have the email in front of me. I asked Kelly to put it in the pack, it's in the pack, Kelly?
There was a, this was by training, a, a three of the, uh, the, the, the.
No, there were thirty people. Well, we don't have, every vendor has to fill out an IRS, was it W9? Yeah, has to fill out these four numbers that we did and if they have not filled one out yet.
Mr. Kennedy, do you know when that was emailed to by your deputy?
I do not, I'm looking for it.
I'll follow up and bring that to his attention. He had followed up with the last one except through an email and we have, remember the procedures that we have not seen yet?
I would assume that it's more than $500 at this point also. He has to send an invoice with a full amount and that we can, I don't think we should put a price necessarily on it when we authorize the payment. It looks like it should be up to $1,000 for the survey management data analysis report developer.
I don't have the, the number and I haven't given more detailed information. My understanding from speaking with him and from the document that he sent through is he was actually quite high cost and saying, "By May, what I've done," the timeline of things was that there was a, an email which is in the packet, which raised concerns about the ability to pay Dr. Sutton or to continue to work with him and the law director issue, their response to that saying there was no issue with working with Dr. Sutton and having the meeting which we had in May. Dr. Sutton, at that point, you know, when I called him after speaking to Mr. Conville to explain, "Listen, there is some concern in the city about whether or not we can pay for these services. I need to let you know that that is an issue that's being raised by the administration before you come to this meeting because I don't want you to have more hours of your work if you don't have a guarantee of being paid and, you know, what you've sent through hasn't been signed as a contract." And he said, you know, that the work that he had done up until that point was approximately $500 of the work I believe, or two contracts that he'd sent through, one for the total amount of the survey and one simply for the work that he had done up until that point and in terms of the design, we have numbers, $500. He was willing to accept that all the work that he had done for us, the meetings that he attended, the agreement that he attended, which was a little bit, thank goodness for Zoom meetings, and then for the final meeting, even he presented thereafter and then gave us the final analysis and then presented the final survey to us and didn't charge us more for that additional work. So, I believe the number is $500.
Oh, an invoice would be good. We don't have an invoice from Dr. Sutton. So, whether it's $500 or some other figure, the contracts that he circulated were prior to him completing those other items. We don't usually try to guess what somebody says they owe us. We usually refer to it. So, invoice would be good, having him fill out paperwork like other vendors do would be appropriate before we cut a check and I would urge that that be done.
So, yeah, the information that he sent through is in fact the contract for the survey design. It details, you know, what he's done in furtherance of that work and details the meetings and then we're all aware of that because we're having meetings. So, he specifies in that document that he worked with council and mayor in University Heights Ohio to sign a mail paper service, bringing back University Heights residents and gathering data concerning perceptions. And prior to his sanitation, he says the cost for the services was $500 and that, as he explained, was for the work that he had done up until May and that he wasn't going to charge us any more and that survey, that didn't work well. So, if that's sufficient for payment, Mr. Kennedy, can, if we approve the payment for that $500 amount, can you then later receive the other documents and whatever email was that was sent out, like the deputy, can that be done after the authorization?
You can do the authorization, then I will follow up and try to.
Wonderful, thank you so much for doing that. So, with that, I've got a motion to authorize a payment to Dr. Tom Sutton for services rendered in connection with the solid waste study in the amount of $500.
Okay, we have a motion to authorize payment to Tom Sutton for services rendered in connection
with the solid waste survey. Have you said Dr. would see $500?
In the amount of $500.
Okay, and we have a second, bye, Mrs. Whitehead. Sorry, discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, just kind of state what I heard, get it? The committee had many public meetings as well as meetings where the, where the administration was present. In the last meeting, our service director was present. Never once was it said that a survey should not be sent out. In fact, the mayor wanted a different company's survey sent out initially. He was, he was the one who actually proposed to have a survey.
That's not true.
It was in the solid waste study and you asked, you had on the agenda to have that company's survey approved and we asked that, we thought that that was biased and that's why we sought out a different company. But, you know, we were involved with all of the, in all of the other meetings. We have a history of surveys in the city with really high response rates compared to other, other, other surveys of this, of these kinds of types. And the residents, this is something that everyone's really passionate about and it would have been nice to see what they, what they said and what they want. We do have very high taxes in the city and this is something that is a benefit to them, one of our only benefits in the sort, in the city. We don't have a community center. Hopefully we will one day. We don't have some other things that other cities have, but this was actually something that residents were really passionate about and they were really involved in and it's a shame that the survey is not going to be sent out.
Well, I have to clarify the record here. First of all, we as administration and Mr. Corney in particular sought GT Environmental to do a survey in response to the request by Mr. Gould that was made the week before Christmas, that we proceed with, with doing a, a survey of the public with regard to solid waste, that addition to the expert opinion that we already have, that we seek the lay opinion of the community. And we did come up with an aggressive schedule where we would have that information out, have the survey, have the information collected and have it back by March of this year so that we could make budgeting decisions if we, if we were making a change and make sure that, that we had that input from the public, council on a different route, which of course council is free to do. But at the same time, when we had that last meeting, Mr. Corney was there to offer the administration's point of view. He was not heard and, and the administration's point of view with respect to questions that we believe are critical, that we should be hearing from the community about cost and about priorities and about the, you know, to ask people what they prefer without the context of the cost question is, is collecting bad data, it's collecting junk data. And we want to make good decisions. You know, I think back to Pearl Rothschild. In 1991, she delivered a State of the City address where she said that one of the primary focuses of local government after all is to deliver high-quality services at the best possible price. And we know from our solid waste study that we're not doing that. We are not delivering high-quality services at the best possible price. And this is something that we have known as a city from the 2009 solid waste study and we know it from the solid waste study draft that we got two years ago last month and we know it from the solid waste final study that we got May of last year. And we have not made any adjustments, not after 2009 and not after July of 19 and not after May of 2020. We continue to spend the third highest per house, per month cost on solid waste pickup and get the third worst results outside of the city of Cleveland on recycling. We can do better than that and we should do better than that and we already have the information we need to do better than that. Mayor?
Mr. Gould? So, just to be clear, when you say that Mr. Corney was heard?
Was not heard.
He was not heard. Mr. Corney did speak at that meeting and the discussion surrounding the cost question was as I had already stated. Now, this, the whole reason that we brought in Walden Wallace College is because they are experts at surveying communities. That's what this specific center does. They do it in the political context and they do it in the service delivery context for various needs and palates, which is why council selected them. Dr. Sutton is the head of that department and in his opinion, being a doctor as he is and having the opportunity to speak with you, to speak with members of council, to have meetings in committee, was of the opinion that this was going to provide, the survey that was formulated will provide us with the best data possible. And so, for you to disagree with that and to call it junk data without any experience or expertise on the collection of surveys is shocking. And this is more than an opinion survey. This is not, do you like backyard trash pickup or do you not? This council has been told very specific cost savings that are associated with doing away with backyard trash pickup. We held a series of public hearings to hear from citizens. One of the major concerns was for the elders of our community and those who live in hilled areas of University Heights, that they would not be able to bring their trash cans down to curb. And there's some discussion still ongoing about what do we do with that? What are our obligations under ABA? How many people are there in the city who are going to require some type of backyard trash pickup? Because sometimes we told them, "Look, if you can't bring your trash can down, we'll come and get it." Well, that's what it costs to. So, we asked people in this survey, is there somebody in your household who will be able to move the cans to and from the curb? And that type of data is repeated in several different areas. To know who our elders are, we ask, what age range are you in? To know individuals who are sitting, who have been in the city for a long period of time, like many of the residents who spoke to us at the public meetings have, we ask how long you've been in the city? And yet, there are questions about people's satisfaction with the current system. There are questions about their desire to move to a different, a different system. But there are also questions on this, and there are also questions, environmental questions regarding recycling, which is another one of the administration's priorities and something that he would suggest and was incorporated into the survey. It is on this one point regarding increasing individual taxes that in consultation with Dr. Sutton was not included on the final audit report. And it is specifically this issue of what are the ongoing costs for backyard trash pickup going to be if we switch to a system that does away with that when there are members of our community who have come out strongly to say, "I can't do this. I want to stay living in my home in University Heights. I'm scared that I'm not going to be able to age in place if you change to this system." I, my wife and I are scared when we go down our driveway in the wintertime alone, let alone carrying a trash can. I don't think I can do it. There were people who were angry and frustrated and saddened at the prospect of having to move out of their homes in University Heights if we switch to this system. And if there is a larger portion of, of that community, and we do, we have a, a large portion of citizens in the city who love living here and have lived here since they were young and want to stay in University Heights. And if that population is so large that it requires us to do backyard trash pickup or side trash pickup at an appreciable amount of homes, then the cost savings projected by the trash study may not be accurate. And so, it's additional data that is being gathered by the survey. And for the reasons that Vice Mayor White stated, I believe that this is not junk data in general. I believe in the expert who uses this as his science to create appropriate and thorough surveys and I believe that the citizens of University Heights, especially those who came up to the public meetings, should be calculated and included in the data that council had before in making the final decision.
Thank you, Mr. Gould. Dr. Sutton also explained during his initial presentation that most of the polling that Walden Wallace has done has been in the political arena and not in service with regard to solid waste studies. And I would also point out that while we do have a considerable senior population here in the city of University Heights, in the city of university heights, Beachwood is more than double the number of seniors as a percentage of the population and also as an outrank figure. And they do have curbside automation. So, you know, the idea that, that we have too many elderly people to do something like that is, is incorrect and is, and that evidence is contrary, as we've seen in communities all over the eastern part of the county, including right next door to Beachwood. So again, these are things that, that other communities have somehow managed to, to work through. And I, I don't believe that the survey would have, would be the key to determining whether or not we can make accommodations for folks who are unable to move their hands. And certainly other communities have shown the way to have elderly populations significantly larger than ours and in these curbside.
Mayor, I may.
Yes.
To Mr. Cool's point, it is not just the more mature members of our community, or more members of our community that may have an issue with moving these wheeled bins up and down the driveway in the ice facility. But there are many residents, our, our community is not at all as same as Beachwood where I lived for 20 years, which is certainly much more flat and a bit plain as compared to us, which, you know, is more the appellation of these many, many streets that have extraordinarily steep driveways. And so I've spoken with residents who've discussed this and they've said, I'm not in a position to be able to get the public down the driveway when it is snowing, when it is icy. And not all of them are elderly, but some do have other health considerations that do not place them in a designation of having an ADA compliant or recognized disability. But certainly it would be beyond them to, to maneuver it. I just think the residents need to be able to be heard. And however much it's going to cost, it's going to be cost savings like Mr. Cool as well as I said, which will be also determined by the results of the survey.
Well, I would encourage that Mrs. Whiteville, that, that Dr. Sutton completed the work to complete a survey which reached administration's satisfaction so that we do have the information that we're seeking and then we will issue that survey. So again, you know, I think one of the reasons we don't have a motion for Dr. Sutton is he understands that we don't have completed the survey yet because, you know, in administration's view, we don't.
I don't think that's the case at all.
Well, Dr. Sutton, Mayor.
Mr. Cool, you may proceed.
Dr. Sutton detailed what we did. We were there for what he did, same to last meeting, which wasn't included in his charges. And frankly, we like Beachwood. To, to Councilwoman Langfield's point, Beachwood has resources that far surpasses for absorbing costs like maintaining backyard trash pickup or helping elder citizens out. When it comes to another agenda I have been working on tonight, the consolidation into the height of contracts, I remember the conversation about that. And this all came about because the state of Ohio came down and said, hey, if you don't consolidate into a regional facility, we're going to take away funding. And Beachwood said, no, we haven't. We're not changing our 911 program for Beachwood. And so I appreciate our leaders to these. I think they are a wonderful community to provide wonderful services. But this council is stewards of this city's money. And the idea that we have the capacity to absorb those costs without understanding what they are and making that decision is unkind of all. But to the point, I'd ask to call the question because we have a motion in a second on the payment of Dr. Sutton.
Good, very good. There's a, Mr. Cool has asked and called the question on the motion to authorize payment to Dr. Sutton for services rendered in connection with solid waste survey in the amount of $500. Mrs. Thomas, please call Earl.
Mrs. Whiteville?
Hi.
Mrs. Wise?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rahn?
Hi.
Mr. Gold?
Hi.
Motion carries. Next item is item J, update discussion regarding the progress of the IP assessment. I referenced this earlier, but myself and Councilwoman Parte and the members of the Tech Advisory Commission invited to a meeting on Monday at 5:30 with Paul Odenberg of Ray and Associates to give us an update as to where they are and, and also to discuss what the city's, how to formulate the city's vision for IT should be. I did also note in passing that the, that the chair of Tech Advisory did resign from Tech Advisory this summer. And, and it remains to be seen who exactly from Tech Advisory will step forward to become their new chair. But we do have the meeting scheduled for 5:30 on Monday and the process is continuing. There was some delay. On Ray and Associates' part, the original person who was handling this came out, did an extensive walkthrough of our city facilities and then received a quit Ray and Associates about two weeks later. They are not charging us, of course, for redoing any of his work, but there has been a time loss associated. Also, there was a certain amount of information that Ray and Associates wanted from Starfish, as council is aware, Starfish, the council had authorized payment to Starfish to work with Ray and Associates because the work that was being sought between Ray and Starfish was above and beyond the contract that Starfish currently has with the city for rendering emergency IT services. Around July 12, Starfish transmitted to Ray and Associates the information that Starfish was, or rather that Ray was seeking from Starfish. And it's our understanding that Ray got the information that it wanted from Starfish and that as of that point, they had what they needed from Starfish. But as they continue to analyze, they have an open line of communication with Starfish with respect to any additional information they might need as they continue on with their assessment. So that is basically where we are with regard to the IT assessment. Are there any questions? All right, seeing done, we will move on to item K, a discussion regarding the progress of facilities assessment. I will respectfully suggest that we will make sure of that and some of the contours of it, that that is a update more appropriately delivered in the executive session. And would suggest that when we get to the portion of the agenda where we talk about executive sessions, that that update will be provided. Which then brings us to letter L, which is a motion to accept and award contract for 2021-2023 Service Department Temporary Labor Staffing to Minutemen Staffing. Mr. Corney?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. This is an item where we use temporary labor mostly for leaf and brush collection in the fall. It's a three-year contract. Our previous three-year contract expires at the end of August. So this will be the, the next three years. We put it out for bid and on Friday, July 30th, we received bids back from only one company, Minutemen Staffing Services of Cleveland. I attached the bid tabulation that we had put in the bid documents and they provided a total bid of $91,514.50 over a three-year period. And I'm recommending that we go with Minutemen Staffing for the temporary labor services.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Are there any questions for Mr. Corney? Mrs. Wise?
Thank you, Mayor. We had previously a three-year contract also, Mr. Corney?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Did we also have a three-year contract beforehand?
That is correct. It was a three-year contract previously.
And do you recall if we had any other bids besides Minutemen last time?
No, last time I remember also only Minutemen bid.
Do you have any feel for why other people aren't bidding on this?
It's been advertised out there publicly in the Plain Dealer and we've called people, but nobody else seems to be interested in providing labor for leaf collection.
Thank you.
Mr. Cool?
Who did we call during this due process?
I don't recall off the top of my head who we called.
Did you call Minutemen?
We publicly advertised it in the Plain Dealer.
Did you call Minutemen?
I did not call Minutemen, but they knew of us coming up because we had discussed the end of their contract.
Okay. I'm just wondering if there may be the opportunity to speak to more temporary staffing companies to request additional bids for a three-year contract. I'd just like to understand better and to hear more communication directed. And it turns out that after this listing of individuals isn't, or these companies aren't willing to, to submit bids, then so be it. But I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that and to have this sent out to bid again, but to have a more robust process of trying to get additional bids.
Do you have a suggestion of particular companies you'd like to contact?
Who did you, you said you'd come to me and I back at this time. Was it similar?
Previous there was a company, I believe A1, that we had contacted that did not bid. I'd have to go back in the records to find out other companies that possibly would be doing this, but I'm not aware of anybody right now other than one.
So there, you know, tell me about when you, what's the process we go through researching appropriate temporary staffing companies to do this type of work?
The processes we advertise for bids, put it in the newspaper and wait for people to bid.
When you said that you weren't aware of anybody else that was doing this kind of work, it seemed that you had done some inquiry or research of what companies may be appropriate to approach to bid. And I wasn't sure what you.
Like I said, just the one other company.
Okay. So maybe there's the opportunity to do a little bit more of that research to see who might be able to bid on it. Other companies that have bid in the past, perhaps looking at, at the records of cities in our, in other areas, huge temporary work and who may have bid on those contracts. Those are some suggestions that I would have if I was doing that work, but I'll leave it to you to, to see, you know, exactly what's done to, to figure out who else could be to bid on that. But that would be somebody who's out there, colleagues of others.
Mr. Corney, is it required when we advertise a bid, that in addition to writing an ad in the newspaper, that we also call people and draw their attention to it?
No, it's not legally required.
Thank you.
Mr. Corney, is there any problem with that?
No, there's no problem.
I think what council and board is just getting at is that it's, I mean, it's a significant amount of money, it's almost $100,000. And if we could possibly get another, at least one, or just to compare, I think that's the main issue. When does the leaf collection begin?
End of August. This has been July, so it was just a delay of getting to council.
I'm sorry, Mr. Corney, do you say end of August or end of October?
The end of August.
To, to begin the.
There's still one minute.
Uh, October is when we begin leaf collection.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Leaf collection will begin right around October 15.
Oh, I was trying to think of some words. So we have a little bit of time if we wanted to get one of our.
Take about another month to advertise again, try calling people, right?
Minimum?
A minute, there's a minimum of 15 days of advertising.
And that means Minutemen after this bid.
That's correct.
And then you bid a different cost.
That's correct.
With a higher.
Could bid anything they want.
I'm all on the memory of this, it would be exactly.
I would point out that that is exactly what we did.
Only having one vendor and knowing that there must be others and not letting them look for them, it is very much, Mr. Cool.
Okay, well, that, that is something else. We, we did go out to bid and, 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 you know, I don't want her to be confused with this, but, and if we reject this bid or don't accept this bid or go out to bid again, we can't go back and then accept this bid. So, you know, the consequences are that, you know, we can then bid differently or not get it. We may not find ourselves in a better position.
So, Mr. Corney, is there a specific motion that's necessary in order to send it back or to reject this and then to send it back after the bid and make sure you do the specific inquiries and others?
It would be just that.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to reject the award of a contract for the 2021-2023 Service Department Temporary Labor Staffing to Minutemen Staffing and directing that a, that the contract be rebid and that effort be made and documented to contact specific other potential bidders on the project.
Here's a motion by Mr. Cool. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion of the motion? Mrs. Thomas, you can call Earl.
Mrs. Whiteville? Hi. Mr. Wise?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
No.
Mr. Rahn?
I'll have to know what it is on too.
Mr. Gold?
Feels a little bit like in a hell game, they got Phil or they got Tom or they're
Mr. Corney, are we still operating under how we can change the charter provisions for what constitutes a quorum in the majority that's required? Are we operating that still under the modification that this council, that quorum shall be I'm sorry, can you read the question?
Sure.
To COVID-related legislation? Correct. And have related legislation that even to protect against individuals not being able to be present from council. That modification was made to statute by this council to make the quorum the number of those who are present and therefore majorities that would continue to conduct the city's business such that council wouldn't vary and Councilwoman Parte are not counted in the quorum for this evening and that the majority would be those who are present. That was my understanding of the legislation.
That is also my understanding of the legislation. What I don't recall immediately is what the sunset was on that discussion, but I Can I give access to the board notes 2023?
It may be that this is a matter of ordinances. I don't want to make the same mistake that prior to the law directors have made in announcing something to pass that passed. I think we know what the recorded vote is, and I would ask for council's forbearance and allow me to take a look at ordinances and make sure I deliver you the correct answers tomorrow. I'm not finding language-specific to motions in the charter. I know this is addressed to someone either in our charter or in our ordinances, specific to motions. In addition, I would take a look at the COVID-related quorum ordinances passed to see whether it's sunset or not, and if it is not sunset, whether it hasn't been met. So 2020-19, the March 19, 2020.
Yeah, the sunset on the ordinance 2020-19 was the inclusion of the state of emergency that is removed or dissolved by Governor DeWine, which is a complaint that the ordinance shall be of no force or effect, and that state of emergency was lifted by Governor DeWine. So I would suggest that the, that 2020-19 would no longer be applicable.
Yeah, and in that case, my recollection, and again, I'm not finding it where I'm looking at, my recollection is that with respect to motions, you must have, you know, four approving votes, but again, I want to, the young record is observing, but to look for the research and report back to council.
I would recall that we had a vote of three to two on the signs back in 2019, and that was a failure of the acceptance of the bid on signs.
I think you're right that they take the bill, because you revert back to the original rule in ordinance, which is majority of council rather than majority of present, so majority of council will be pro rati.
Right, yeah. I, like I said, I think that's right, but I just want to qualify and sort of select and check.
But the motion was to reject it, not to accept it.
Well, that's the other thing.
So that doesn't...
There can't have been a motion to accept a bid. I imagine the vote would be the swing opposite way, so it would not accept. You'd have the same issue.
Exactly.
Either we're not going to get a bid accepted today, it's just whether or not you...
You may want a table, so you have additional numbers to vote, because if you think, well, or, or not, I mean, there are strategic decisions here that you can make. If the map is the same, then the vote is flip-flopped, and you voted not to accept.
Yeah, I mean, the implication isn't that the vote to reject, it doesn't mean that we've not accepted the bid.
Correct.
There hasn't been a vote to accept the bid. Maybe you learn your things to take that one.
Because when it does violate what we just voted on, it actually goes part of the motion that's on the agenda.
You know, I would let the motion fail. Not really for a motion to fail.
Well, if the motion failed, could it be another motion?
Well, you can move to table.
But can't move to table knowing that, not knowing if the motion passed or failed.
Does a motion, does a motion item on the item on the agenda that fails then require that procuring?
I would also ask the council to think pragmatically here, that if we don't reach some sort of conclusion on this bid, whether it's to accept it or reject it, if we reject it, then we're in a position to go out to bidding. It's in limbo, it's tabled, then we can't either accept the bid or go out to bid for more bids, and leads are going to pile up. And I don't think the community's going to appreciate the, our not being able to hire any, you know, the additional staff that we traditionally do to pick up the lead. I'm concerned about a timing issue here. And we're going to do something different than accepting the bid. We would like to get through that in short order.
Why don't we just wait until the law director research this tomorrow, and then we'll have our answer? Because either way, we'll either go out for more bids, or we're going to keep the minimum bid. So we'll look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just pulling up the calendar. I think it's 2020.12, which indicates that you need four votes to pass. So the motion to reject fails. The motion is failed, so you can table, or you can cancel the motion.
Is there another motion? Why don't we make a motion to accept the bid? Just make a motion, and our fellow motion to accept the bid. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rock to accept the bid for the 2021-23 Service Department Temporary Labor Staffing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cool. Any discussion on the motion? Same, I'll make just a small discussion. You know, we've worked with it for a long time, and our council even before that, I don't have any problem with this bid, your budget is over a period of three years. There's no other vendor that had bid, even after calls to vendors, and I'm not confident that anyone's going to bid a second time. I don't know why, but here it is, and they would love to work with us. So that's, that's why I would...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rock.
Is there any further discussion? Same, Mrs. Thomas, we call the room.
Mrs. Whitefield? Mrs. White, aye. Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Phil?
Aye.
Okay, the motion fails. I'm sorry, the motion.
The motion.
Yes, the motion fails. So the motion to accept is failed, and thus the bid is being rejected.
Correct.
Okay, so that puts us in a position to go out, go out to bidding. Very good. You will now move on to the, to item M, motion authorizing seeking bids for the 2021-1 tree pruning and removal contract.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a number of trees which came up on our last pruning project as well as our August 11th storm. So the list you have before you is probably a little shorter than the current list I have. The current list I have has 45 items on it. Most of them are damaged trees and/or trees that were cited in our last contract that needed additional work, so we didn't have the money in the contract to work, to do that work. So I'm asking for council's authorization to go out for bid to do the work listed in the list here, plus a couple extra trees that came up this past August 11th.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Any questions for Mr. McCarty? No, is there a motion? I have a question, I'm sorry, which, uh, I'm sorry, what area of the city is this focused on this time?
This is not a focus group. These are damaged or hazardous trees, or stumps. So you'll see a number of trees that have been removed either by the service department or they fell over in a storm, and we picked them up. So there'll be a lot of stumps on this list along with, like I said, damaged trees that we weren't able to take care of in previous contracts.
So it's minimal.
That's why.
It's more minimal than normal perings.
Yes, yes, that's why the list is only like 45. We normally have close to 200 or more. And I may be coming back to you for that a little bit later.
Also move to authorize the seeking.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cool.
Mr. McCarty, I think you were out working diligently with the rest of the vote, you know, making sure that our team has too much to do in that. I asked a question just about a citizen, and will this process work with some of the trees that are kind of damaged? I think I brought to your attention one specifically in the corner of Shoal and Northern Cliff. And I, you were, I think you were voice memeling probably from your truck, and your response was our process to add them to the next people to this $50,000, the longest I've ever applied. And my response to you was, say what? So I'm just trying to understand, when you go out and you're surveying the damage and you see in this specific tree was like way up, you know, 30, 40 feet up, it's broken and hanging over the street, what's our process around that as this addressing that?
This is the process.
Perfect, okay.
It goes on the list, and yes, I do have the one on the corner of Shoal, North Cliff, Pine Island.
Thanks, I...
As I said, your list kind of ended back when I did it originally, well before the August 11th storm, so this was August 1st, obviously this list was prepared. We have since added some trees.
Okay. I'll second it. I'm sorry? I'll second it. The councilwoman, Whitefield, made a motion.
I made a motion.
So, Mrs. Whitefield, what was your motion?
I made a motion to authorize the seeking bids for the 2021 tree pruning and removal contract. Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Whitefield, authorizing seeking bids for the 2021-1 tree
pruning and removal contract, and Mr. Cool, your second.
I, yes, second. Very good, second by Mr. Cool. Any discussion on the motion? Same, Mrs. Thomas, we call the room.
Mrs. Whitefield?
Hi.
Mr. White, aye. Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Phil?
Aye.
Very good motion carriers. Item M is motion authorizing the sale of unneeded service department pickup truck, number UH-3, Ford 2007 F-250 that was auctioned by GovDeals Inc. for $7,550. I know you're Mr. McCarty, and Mr. Kennedy can speak as assistance, and you're at the podium. Mr. McCarty, we'd like to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item where previously in the year, council had authorized me to replace pickup truck due to the rusting frame and bed on it. It's a blue 2007 Ford pickup that has outused its useful life. So we purchased, or we requested the purchase, and we're waiting for the delivery, manufacturer of a new pickup. But in the meantime, we could no longer use this truck, so we put it on GovDeals Auction. We received a bid of $7,550 for it, and Dennis Kennedy had pointed out to me that there is an ordinance out there that says whenever you're going to sell city property that's unneeded, that exceeds $7,500, we need a council approval. So we're $50 over on this one. The gentleman who bid on it, we had contacted him and told him we were going to wait for council's approval before we took any other action. So he is waiting to find out if we're going to honor his bid process and allow him to purchase the truck. So I'm requesting council's authorization to sell unneeded personal property in an amount of $7,550.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Mr. Kennedy, do you care to add?
Uh, no, just a requirement of the Capitol.
Okay, only if you could see me under my mask and laugh that we have this conundrum. But, yes, yes, the auction bid came up $50 over the ordinance bid, so we're here with this for you. Is there a motion to so authorize the sale?
So...
Thank you, Mr. Cool. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Mrs. Whitefield. Mrs. Thomas, we call the room.
Mrs. Whitefield, aye. Mr. White, aye. Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Phil?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCarty, and Mr. Kennedy, for catching.
Okay, letter O, motion to accept the bid for Terrace Construction for the 2021 Traymore Road Water Main Replacing Project as the best and lowest bid award the contract to the same amount not to exceed $489,588. You have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is our waterline project for this year that Cleveland Water, we applied for and got the funding, and this is 100% funded by Cleveland Water, not only the construction, but the design and the construction inspection. And the project is on Traymore from Warrensville Center Road to Hillbrook, replacing a six-inch line with an eight-inch line, and removing all the hydrants and valves and replacing them in kind. One correction on the, which I just noticed on your ordinance, Terrace's bid was $498,975.47. What's listed there is actually the engineer's estimate.
And what was the number again?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
And Terrace is a reputable contractor. In fact, they have one of the annual contracts with Cleveland Water. They do a lot of work with Cleveland Water, and we had five bids for this, and they were the lowest, and we're recommending it.
Very good. Next, Mr. Churney. Any questions for Mr. Churney?
I have a question more from the finance director. So this is the water main replacement project, so it's funded through Cleveland Water, then doing it reverse, or partial or full amount?
Correct.
And what, how much is it? Is that full amount?
Full amount, correct. And they actually give us money in front. They had to approve this bid before I brought it to you, which they have, and we invoice them for that amount. They actually give us the check and we reconcile at the end of the job, because some items might be non-performed, or may have some extras, whatever.
All right, thank you, Mr. Churney. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Cool. Mr. Churney, this water main, my understanding is that our agreement, Mr. President, Rock's point, with the water department, is that it's like under soil, they have to redo the landscape, but if it's under street, we have to pay for the street portion, is that right?
That's only on water main breaks. This one, the street portion is included with it.
So that's part of the formula?
Correct, correct. This is a replacement rather than just a fixable break.
Mayor, make a motion to accept a bid for Terrace Construction for the 2021 Traymore Road Water Main Replacement Project as the best and lowest bid to award the contract to the same amount not to exceed $489,588. Would you amend that to the $498,975.47?
Very good, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Cool. Is there a second?
All second, Mr. Thomas.
Very good, second by Mrs. Whitefield. Is there any discussion? Same, Mrs. Thomas, we call the room.
Mrs. Whitefield, aye. Mr. White, aye. Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Phil?
Aye.
Very good motion carriers. Thank you, Mr. Churney. Next is item P, motion authorizing mayor to enter into agreement of signal service of pressing civil maintenance. Chief Rogers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Council regarding this item, we'll be speaking, content that's specific to a three-page memo that was sent out today regarding this item is specific to a motion to enter into agreement of signal service specifically for annual maintenance and monitoring of the city's signals for the year 2021, and also the four-page proposed agreement from a signal service for this... And also the four-page proposed agreement from a signal service for this service. I think it's important to, as you see this document, this memo, go over some historical context from the administrative perspective on why there's going to be a recommendation to use signal service for comprehensive maintenance and monitoring of our city signals. So I'm going to go through the memo to provide that information. Starting with this past April, our 33-year employee of the signs and signals department resigned from his position. Since that time, Signal Service Company has been providing related emergency stopcap service to the city as needed for maintenance and monitoring of signals. Subsequently, administrative assessment of the related signs and signals city's position has determined the following. Over the past few decades, the signs and signals employee workload has become significantly reduced as a result of no longer being responsible for city line striping, which has been contracted out, no longer making city signs, which has also been contracted out, and no longer managing the city partner meters in various business districts on a daily basis as a result of the meters no longer existing in the city. The signs and signal boom truck, known as 7298, which is a Ford F-350, has been used by the signal maintenance, for signal maintenance by the city employee. And that vehicle, even though it's a 2007, does only have 14,500 miles on it. Also, to replace this vehicle costs approximately $80,000. It's currently in fair condition at this time. And last year, it did require a few thousand dollars in repairs to get the boom certified during its annual inspection. Traffic signal work that has involved complexity or significance in the past has historically been contracted out to signal service and not completed by the city employee. City of Beechwood formally contracts with Signal Service Company annually for all city signal maintenance and monitoring needs. The city of Cleveland Heights never replaced their two in-house signal employees many years ago and indicated that they had significant difficulty with finding qualified and interested candidates to fulfill this specialized type of service in-house. Since then, Cleveland Heights has used Signal Service Company for all signal needs as well. City of South Euclid uses Signal Service Company for all significant signal needs. The city of Lynn Harris utilizes the same formalized process of the Beechwood for signals through Signal Service Company. The city of Shaker Heights has city employees who handle their signal needs. However, they use Signal Service Company for anything that is beyond their capabilities for issues. Regarding the 2021 traffic control budget, 1140 Department, it appears to have appropriated approximately $76,500 for the signs and signals city employees' salary and fringe benefits. And that's indicated this position has been vacant since April this year. The proposed Signal Service Company agreement identifies a cost of approximately $2,640 for annual traffic signal monitoring for a 20 intersections. And that's $63 per hour for maintenance services that comes about as needed. A neighboring community formally contracts with Signal Service on an annual basis who uses the same service agreement that is proposed before you tonight and who has twice as many traffic intersections as University Heights, that being 40 versus our 20. That city budgets approximately $77,000 annually for Signal Service Company to provide a comprehensive traffic signal maintenance and monitoring for them. Given this budget figure from a neighboring community, it is reasonable projected that the total annual cost for Signal Service Company to provide comprehensive monitoring and maintenance for 20 intersections and signals could be approximately $38,500 per year. Subsequently, it's projected that by utilizing Signal Service Company for signal maintenance purposes, instead of hiring a city employee for this function, the city could hopefully save up to $38,000 annually. If we did hire a Signal Service Company instead of hiring a city employee for the service, additional cost savings could occur as a result of that having to replace the $80,000 sign shop boom truck, known as 7298, which would likely be due for replacement in the next few years. 7298 gets parked outside and exposed to the elements throughout the entire year and the body flatbed boom and the boom base is becoming completely rusted, rusted through regardless of its little mileage. Additional revenue could result if the city immediately sold 7298, which it wouldn't likely need to be maintained in the city fleet if we did hire a Signal Service Company for this annual service. Result, may I respectfully request and recommend for city council to authorize the city to enter into annual agreement with Signal Service Company to provide comprehensive traffic signal monitoring and maintenance for the city of University Heights in 2020.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Rogers. Are there any questions for Chief Rogers? Is there a motion?
Some. I'll second.
Okay, motion to approve by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mrs. Blackwell. Any discussion on the motion? I just, the contract that was sent out, I just haven't had a chance to review. This was, I know probably received, but we didn't have it up for a while today. So my vote was still only because I haven't had the opportunity to review the contract. So I just, there's no comment.
I can also add just additionally, the great identifying the contract of, or I'm sorry, the total cost just for signal monitoring of, for $2,640 for the 20 intersections without the city appropriated for the year and on the time when we actually let it to an agreement. Just for critical indication.
I would simply add to the chief's presentation that I did consult with some of our neighboring mayors with regard to how they have handled this as well as some of the other contractors. And the chief, and the chief went over much of this. But in addition, I can speak with regards to the city of Newton. They actually went out and posted the position that we recently had, had the reservation. And they did not have any, not finding anybody qualified to actually apply for the position. And they went, went to signal service rather than, similarly, that found also that there were cost savings associated by going to signal service. So this is one of those instances where, where due to attrition and changes in circumstances with regard to let this decision stand over time, it does make sense to go with this outside profession of service. And not always, it's not always my first choice, but in this instance, it is the best choice. And I appreciate Chief Rogers' strong work in taking this particular bid and also in coordinating with other communities with regard to let all the processes go through.
So we do have a motion and seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blackwell?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Earl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mrs. Will?
No.
You have a very good motion, carriers. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Okay, next item is item Q, Resolution 2021-26 to ratify the material terms of the One Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio, under understanding and consistent terms of the July 21, 2021 national opioid settlement agreement to some emergency, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. The state of Ohio has negotiated a settlement agreement with Amerisource, Bergen, Cardinal Health, and Hessen, three of the major pharmaceutical companies named as defendants in the state's opioid litigation. Under the proposal, those companies will pay up to an estimated amount of approximately $805 million to the state over a period of 18 years. Pursuant to the settlement agreement, 15% of that amount will go directly to the state of Ohio, 30% to go directly to municipalities and other political subdivisions, and 55% will go to what is called One Ohio Foundation, which will then be distributed out to municipalities and other political subdivisions across the state of Ohio. The money will be restricted for specifically earmarked opioid-related expenses and those include pre-approved uses such as intervention, treatment, education, harbor services, designed specifically to stem the tide of the opioid epidemic. Participation levels among municipalities will affect how much money the state of Ohio and its subdivision receive. We know that the city of University Heights will receive somewhere between $43,277.17 at the low end, or $61,824.33 on the high end, based on participation. The more participation among Ohio municipalities, the greater the amount awarded to municipalities. In order for the state to maximize recovery, it's critical that they get at least 95%. Municipalities have been, 95% participation, just to clarify. Municipalities have been asked to sign a participation agreement. That participation agreement essentially functions as a release of claims against the pharmaceutical companies. It's anticipated that there will be at least one additional settlement forthcoming that includes separate dollar amounts that will be awarded to municipalities and that's in connection with Johnson &amp; Johnson. At this time, the administration is asking for ratification of participation agreement, which the city sent in to the state of Ohio and to Defense Council for the pharmaceutical companies and the timeframe required to meet 95% participation threshold.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCall. Any questions for Mr. McCall? Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Will this, will these funds flow toward police and fire for education supplies? How, how will we use this?
We don't exactly know, but I think that's entirely plausible. Police and fire would be administering programs consistent with uses that are outlined and approved under the terms of the agreement. Suspected of getting a lot of guidance from the higher attorney general as we receive funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any further questions? Mr. Will? Mr. McCall, just to clarify, the distinction of Ohio is included in the national opioid settlement because we are currently in litigation and trying to decide whether or not.
Yes, well, the state of Ohio is accomplishing in part that this settlement agreement is opt-out in the national agreement. My understanding is that is a strategic consideration that's based at least in part on the concern that we try to get these dollars into the state sooner rather than later and before bankruptcies are possible.
And there's a, was the, did the court set deadlines to actually accept this? I wasn't sure if there was a development since last week. Is this, this agreement hasn't been accepted by Defense Council? They had until Friday to respond?
No. Well, that's been a little bit of a moving target. We were initially told that the date was April 13th. There's since been, if the last one, I don't know if this will be indicated, the deadline is extended to the 20th. But in any event, the courts were attempting to beat the transitional deadline of 13th. The city has submitted its participation form and that is the reason for the request for ratification. Does that answer your question?
No, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding this, pardon? There's not actually an agreement right now that the Defense Council has until the 20th to respond to this. We sent it to the, the meeting in Florida, right?
That's correct.
Which is plaintiff's counsel. They represent the state of Ohio. So I'm just making sure that we're, that this is a tool that's being used by the state of Ohio to try to suggest to the defendants that they should accept this agreement because they have a mass. But there's not actually an agreement right now between them.
Technically, that's correct.
Mayor, thank you so much for congratulating that. I've signed, signed that thing that often. It was a big move and a big show that we were serious about that stuff. Thank you, Mr. McCall. Mayor, I make that motion to pass Resolution 2021-26 to ratify the material terms of the One Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio, under understanding and consistent terms of the July 21st, 2021 national opioid settlement agreement on emergency. Okay, we have a motion to accept the resolution to ratify on emergency. Mr. Will, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Blackwell. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you first take the roll on this special rule?
Mrs. Blackwell?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Earl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mrs. Will?
Hi.
Very good. And on the main motion?
Mrs. Blackwell?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Earl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mrs. Will?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carriers, seeing none. Next is letter R, Resolution 2021-28 declaring 3708 Meadow Brook a public nuisance. Mr. Engelbrecht, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening. I emailed council photos along with a report from Coach Nee in regards to this particular property. I visited this property in July with the owner of the property. It took a while. One of the things that I tried to find out when I first came into this position was the status of vacant properties of the city, what their condition was and the interior, if anything needed to be addressed, potential demolition, so on and so forth. So I knew about this property since May of this year. It took a while because the owner...